We have offered the public the opportunity of adequate access either by Zoom or by phone. And so, welcome everyone. And we have had already a pretty interesting executive session. And now we have a bunch of items. So I think we should just jump right in. So we might jump around a little because I see we have the highway superintendent on and interested parties. But we're going to start with a police department update so we can free Matt to have an evening to himself along the way. Any introduction needed, Matt?
No, it's been a bit since we've given you an update. And obviously, the pandemic has really caused a lot of turmoil. And it slowed down some of the progress. But you haven't heard from me for a bit. I just wanted to let you know that the PD is doing well. We've been facing a number of our own challenges, both pandemic related and not outside of that. But to just give you a quick update as to where we're at as we stand now. And as I said, obviously, the pandemic has had impacts on us, both operationally and across from an expense and cost perspective. Some of the things that you may not take into account is the courts. And the court system is completely upside down still. And they're finally starting to embrace Zoom. But that has had a tremendous impact on us and the need to hold guests longer than we normally would. And because we can't deliver folks to the court. There's been a number of things like that that we've had to overcome. And the men and women are doing a decent job, and we are fighting our way through it. But because of that COVID, some of the things that we wanted to work on in this year, as part of that, our strategic plan was to put a tremendous emphasis on the officer professional development. And all of those courses dried up, sort of knee jerk reaction in the first few months. Now they're starting to reemerge. They're all going online. So we're now able to at least start that. We're delayed about six months in that regard. But from a personnel standpoint, just want to run through a couple of things that have happened since the last time that we talked. Half of our full-time patrol staff has left us since the last time we spoke. Doug Mazzola has retired. Mike Gagnon has joined the state police. And Christian Oberg has left us for the Mashpee police. So those folks, we wish them well, thank them for their service. And in the door comes Kevin Brower. Kevin is through the ranks here as a special officer, is now full time. He's yet to go to the academy. He's going anywhere. Scott Dinacola again came up through the ranks with us as a part-time officer. He graduated from the Cape Cod Academy just a couple of months ago. So he's out on the road. And Zach Bowden, Zach was a young man that had self-sponsored for the Cape Cod Academy. And we sort of knew Christian Oberg, he was talking with Mashpee. We sort of knew that was going to happen eventually. But it really, it finally just came on us pretty quickly. And Zach was there and available. And what a great find, tremendous young man. And I hope you get the opportunity to meet him in the coming weeks. Because I think we, all three of them are doing a fantastic job. We've really been blessed with being able to fill that big of a void that quickly with such quality people. On the part-time side of the house, Ronnie Clock retired. Ronnie, a fixture in Plimpton, I don't know how many. Ronnie was there many years before I came the first time. So I don't know what the math is on Ronnie, but Ronnie just recently retired. And Dana Fowler, Dana retired in end of April. So we welcomed in a couple of new people. Nate Christopher, Nate is a Plimpton guy, was on Ring Road. And he also works as a game warden, if you will, down in Plymouth for a number of years. So he's with us on a part-time basis. And we have Wendy Crafty, if you see Wendy out there. Those two are both sort of aggressively going through their field training program. So we were able to shuffle the deck a little bit midstream with some of those things. And we're in good shape right now in that regard. Some of the things that we have been tackling over the last few months, and you saw some of these things at town meeting and the formal warrant articles. We had to upgrade our radios, particularly our portable radios, to upgrade them to digital. Before too long, we won't be able to talk to some of our neighbors if we didn't make this conversion. So thank you to the voters for supporting us in that. And we're in the process of finishing off that project. So all of our police department comms will be up to date on a digital platform. And we also did really well through the regional old colony, the communication center. Their 911 grant, both on the police and fire side. We both did very well. We had substantial upgrades sort of to the radio infrastructure. I think at the end of the day, it's probably over $100,000 plus. And that didn't cost us a penny. That all came through their support incentive grant. So that has us in good shape as well. During that time, we started the prescription drug disposal program. We have the kiosk in the police station lobby. That continues to be a tremendous success. Even during the current situation with COVID, it's still open. Want folks to know that all you gotta do is come. If the door isn't open, hit the intercom. We'll get somebody there to get you access to the kiosk inside the police station. We're in the process of finishing up a pretty substantial network upgrade within the police department. We had some, we didn't buy anything new for workstations when we went from the old building to the new building. And we found that particularly because of a lot of these force fed things with Zoom and some of the requirements necessary, we had to replace a whole bunch of workstations and a network server. We were actually able to get that done. Some of that, again, supported by The Rock. And some of that is supported by the town, what do we call it, the tech upgrade that was passed at town meeting. So a lot of work done in that regard. Our fiber connection to the regional dispatch center is complete. It's up and running. That's also making our communications with them much better. We now can push out the video monitoring to them over the fiber. And it brings a number of other efficiencies to us. The town campus fiber project, which was broken down into three phases. We were able to complete phase one with FY20 funding. That's done. That is done. What that did is it connected the police station, because we're going to be the hub for the phone system. That connected us, closed off the connection for the town fiber. Phases two and three are going to start. I'm hopeful that we'll get started probably at the end of this month with a completion of right around October. What that's going to do is obviously it's connecting all the buildings. So we're able to build out our own network. We're also going to be able to lose the Comcast, pretty expensive internet service that we pay for. Now through our Open Cape relationship with them through the fiber. It's going to be substantial monthly savings. Everyone in town government will be able to convert over to that and be able to lose their existing internet agreements with Comcast or whomever. The phone system upgrade, and that is, again, that waits for the completion of phases two and three of the campus fiber project. But once that's done, the highway, fire, townhouse, and library and police station will all be connected. It'll be hubbed in. We're using the main system at the police station that's being expanded out. There'll be some new phones at some of the locations. And we're going to be doing a little bit of cabling upgrading here and there as necessary. But it doesn't change for the residents. The phone numbers you've always dialed, that remains the same. But essentially, what we're doing is really a number of phone lines that we're paying for, copper lines. Those can go away and at a pretty significant monthly savings. Within the town hall campus, you're going to have three to four digit extension dialing throughout the town government. You're going to have voice mail to your email and a number of features like that. Intercomming between the different buildings. So it's going to be a substantial upgrade to communications at the town level. So again, we're hoping to get that started the minute the fiber is finished. And relatively hopeful that we can get the phone system up and running and done by the latest, the first of December. And hopefully, we can get it done sometime in November. One of the other things, going back to some of that professional development, seeing that we lost a lot of that opportunity to send officers out because of the shutdowns. In fact, we had people in the police academy when the pandemic really hit, and they sent them home to us. They sent them home, and we put them back to work. They eventually were cleared to go back, and they have completed their training. But in the meantime, we have developed our own in-house training program, which is going to go sort of concurrent with the state's in-service training. We're going to offer six courses a year, four to six hour courses. We're going to do them every other month in-house. And thanks to the new building and our ability to have it, we have a training room, our ability to do that. So we're excited about that. We've already had the first couple of classes. And next month, we're doing policy update. I'm just going, I'm going to run them through a whole host of policy updates that we've done. Certification, you know, we entered the state certification program. COVID has slowed that process down a bit for us, but we still continue to march on. We're now actually starting to be able to pick up speed again with that. And if I hadn't mentioned it previously, we're not going it alone. We have partnered with Halifax, Rochester, and Hanson. So our communities are working together to build these manuals, processes, and practices that will meet certification standards. That was initially, I had an army of interns that were supporting the program and helping each town. But we lost COVID again. We lost the interns. We're hoping to maybe get interns back at some point this fall, just not sure when that'll happen. Some of the other things that we've done that is part and parcel with the certification process. We have named Dan Hoffman as our civil rights officer. We have completely revised the rules and regulations section of the department manual. We have completed our, now that we are in the certification program, our first annual use of force analysis and report was completed. And I believe we submitted that to the selectmen. A lot of work has gone on, you know, prior to some of these national, well chronicled, national events. About a month and a half before the incidents in Minneapolis, we had revised our use of force policy for the second time since I've been back. And, you know, just to assure, I've had this conversation with the selectmen that our policy is very progressive. And it already touches on all of the issues that you're hearing now in police reform circles. So we've stayed ahead of the game with that. And then since this Minneapolis, we reviewed it again and made a couple additional minor modifications. So we're doing our very best to stay on top and be accountable, making sure that we are following the current best practices. We've revised their pursuit policy very recently within the department. We have reissued, revised, and reissued the citizens complaint process. And something new and exciting is we now have a physical fitness incentive program for the officers in the union. They'll be taking their first annual PT test. They're all very excited about this, but actually, yeah, they're embracing this. They're going to do that at the end of this month. And so we're actually excited about that. And there's, to maintain good health and good standards and keep themselves in good shape, there's a little bit of incentive for them, but I think it's a win-win. And the last thing that we accomplished, and this is through the most recent contract agreement, is we did some modifications to the drug and alcohol testing program, particularly as it relates to language with the reasonable suspicion and how we get there and then how we manage that. So the town and the union came to a very reasonable agreement on that. We made that modification, and I really like how that played out. So that's it. That is the Reader's Digest, as fast as I can read it, update. But it's been a while. I didn't want you to think we're just napping during the pandemic. We're seizing the opportunity to get some things done.
That's great, Matt. Thank you so much. When was the last time we did this? You think it was six months ago?
Or at least, yeah.
I think I am reminded that doing this every six months, having the fire chief in makes huge sense. I'm thrilled to get this update. I think we're all thrilled that particularly in these kind of tumultuous times, we have a real professional sitting in your chair. So thank you very much. Any major questions for Matt?
One of the things, if I could, I just wanted to just sort of touch upon the police reform bill, which that is, I've spent a great deal of time through mass chiefs for the last month or so through my former position as the president of accreditation. Accreditation is a big piece of the reform bill. But I will say that I want, you know, the residents of the town to know that we are far more progressive here in Massachusetts, in the Northeast in particular, when it comes to policing standards and training. A lot of what we're seeing in the reform bill, the things that we've, first, you know, they talk about the application of chokeholds. We have never, ever trained our offices, authorized that as a use of force, and trained our offices in that, never. So a prohibition on that, we welcome that with open arms. The post program, that certification program, that is a piece of a lot of the various bills. I can tell you that we have filed that bill for the last four sessions, the police chiefs. We want that. It's not being forced down our throats. We were the ones that have been trying to get that through the legislature for four years now. So I'm glad that they're finally embracing. It's too bad. It took a tragedy for that. But we're not asleep at the wheel. We've been looking to do that for quite some time. The old accreditation process for which we're in now. Accreditation here in Massachusetts goes back to the early 80s. And that's when a group of police chiefs petitioned the governor to create an accreditation commission as part of EOPS. It didn't happen. Finally, Governor Well did sign an order, and it did happen. But pretty quickly, when the budget got tight, gone. Governor Romney slashed the budget and got rid of the accreditation commission. So in the meantime, the mass police chiefs and a number of other organizations said, we just can't stand. We reformed it as a nonprofit back in 94, and it's operated ever since. We have 220 police departments in the accreditation program here in Massachusetts. I'm thrilled that now the state wants to reinvest in the accreditation program. Frankly, I'm a little leery. Let's let the private nonprofit continue to function. Let's keep EOPS and the administration out of it. So it doesn't become fodder of budgetary games every year. It's doing fine, and I think that the state and the commission can work together quite well. Number of other pieces to the reform bill talks about training. And we've been chasing the legislature for the better part of 20 years to get real about funding training for law enforcement in Massachusetts. And, you know, again, it's terrible that tragedy has to sort of get people's attention when it comes to the legislature, but that's where we're at. And we're hoping that some meaningful dollars towards training. We're constantly creating new unfunded mandates for police training and police responsibility. We're not supporting that. What the state's been budgeting for police training up till about a couple of years ago barely covered the leases for the three buildings that we had. We've been trying to do curriculum, complete rebuild of curriculum. We've been trying to move courses online, and we just didn't have the money. So it looks now like there's going to be some movement there. So we're excited about that. So, you know, a lot of what you're seeing in that police reform, we embrace. I think, and interestingly, with mass chiefs, we have been working very closely with, and really are very much aligned in our philosophy on this, with the Black and Latino caucus. They've been with us for the last month, month and a half. And it's striking how, you know, what we're looking to get accomplished and what they're asking for are very similar. So right now, what's coming out of that conference committee is a little ugly. And, you know, we'll work it out. But, you know, the main pieces of this are things that we embrace and we have been asking for. So just wanted to have the opportunity to express that to the residents. Because whenever I have this conversation offline with neighbors and people like, I didn't know. Jeez, I didn't know. Jeez, I didn't know. Well, because you're not hearing that. So now you know. You know, we are engaged. And we really do value improving and following best practices, and those things evolve. And we're right there, and we're hoping that what comes out of this bill eventually is something a little bit more reasonable. But we'll see where that takes us.
Matt, fortuitously, we do know, and your efforts and your professionalism are really greatly appreciated. And thank you so much for the update.
Thank you, sir.
So we have still a pretty big agenda to go. So I think we're going to jump down to the next item. I'm going to take the chair's prerogative and just go a little bit out of order since there are some people concerned about this next one. So the agenda item, declaration of safety zone, Main Street and Ring Road intersection. I asked for this one to be put on the agenda. Just a little bit of background, back, I don't know, several weeks ago, the Board of Selectmen, we went over our projects and priorities list. And I think I drew the short straw maybe and ended up with the speed zone issues to work on a little bit. So a couple of weeks ago, Liz and I met with Rob, the highway superintendent. And we talked a little bit about speed zones. I was kind of hot to trot on the possibility of speed bumps, which I had seen in the Plymouth area as a way of potentially slowing people down. We learned of some really considerable objections or concerns about that. But we certainly did talk about this declaration of safety zones that would allow the Board of Selectmen to set up 20 mile an hour speed limits in those zones. That's something that the Board of Selectmen voted maybe about a year ago, authorizing us to do that. Rob, at the time, did mention that he was working on a different, simpler design for Main and Ring Road. And he subsequently shared that with Liz and I. Liz and I talked about bringing that to the Board of Selectmen at our next meeting. That is later this month or the next time we were all together. So the main objective tonight was to talk about speed zones. I guess somewhere along the way, John and Rob met and took a look at the site and invited Rob in. I think Liz and I had originally talked about inviting Rob in for an engender item specifically on that new plan. And that might well be something we'll save for a future meeting. The intent tonight, and this won't go on forever, I'm going to shut up in a minute. But the intent tonight, I think we hoped that the Board of Selectmen might go ahead and vote designating a safety zone based both at Main Street, Ring Road, and at the Winnetuxent Prospect intersection. The intent there was a simple, very inexpensive way to slow people down. And part of it was an experiment to see to what extent doing something like that, particularly at the Ring and Main Street intersection, might solve a fair part of the problem. Particularly in tight economic times. And I think some serious questions of the funding of a major engineered study or a major rebuild of that intersection. So that's what we're looking for, at least the consideration of going ahead and declaring a safety zone tonight. And so I'll open that up to discussion.
So I think we've been talking about potentially having at Ring Road and Main Street something similar to the Upland Crescent Street island. So I had a couple of things I wanted to just check out. One, in terms of the speed limit, I had heard, and I don't know, Liz, whether you had a chance to check with legal, that once you implement a speed limit of 20 miles per hour, you cannot rescind it later. So that was one concern I had. The second concern was when you go down and stand physically where the island is at Ring Road and Main Street, there's a telephone pole there. And back when we first started talking about how that might be redesigned, I asked Jim Mulcahy what it would take to move the pole. And he said he got a figure of $200,000, which I felt was outrageous. I just can't imagine that. Could you silence briefly, Liz? So the second part was, is there a way to put an island, keeping the pole? Or could the pole be moved back a little so we could do something similar to the Upland Street Crescent situation? Rob and I met, we talked, it turns out, you know, we don't want to move the rock wall. It's a beautiful rock wall. We don't want to take anybody's land. So there were some givens, basically do no harm, but try to get the sites so that they were easier to see. And I just feel reluctant to vote for a 20 mile an hour reduction, find out we can't change it, and then find out that we should be addressing that anyways. I think, you know, I've lived in town for 50 years in that same house. I've seen the, that has been a problem for a long time. It's hazardous there because it's the school entrance for a lot of people that come down Main Street. And I think, you know, in a way, maybe this is an opportune time for us to step back, look at it. It looks like the school is going to be on a different calendar. Hopefully, there won't be as much traffic. Maybe there'll be more. I don't know. Maybe, John, you can talk to that after. But I just feel like it's time for us to see if we can come up with a solution.
John, forgive me for interrupting. I want to be a little careful here because until a couple hours before the meeting, I wasn't aware that Rob was coming. I had actually promised people that had asked about this that we weren't going to speak very much about a reconstruction this evening, that that would be an engender item for a future meeting.
I guess I wasn't aware of that. So I'm fine if we want to take this off to another time.
Well, I think the process and any decisions on how to move forward on a reconstruction should be an agenda item for a future meeting. My concern has been that any reconstruction, redesign and reconstruction is going to take months, if not years, between the design and the actual funding and the doing of the project. I saw the speed limit thing as a short-term strategy that does in no way excludes a bigger project like we're describing, but a way to start rather than leave the intersection as it is for another year or more. We did ask Liz to check with town council on whether the speed safety zone could be rescinded. We didn't hear back from him. My proposal or consideration would be that we vote to designate the speed zone with the understanding that it could be rescinded.
Well, I don't think you can do that. I mean, if you voted, and then you find out.
There's nothing in, so council did not respond to me in time for this evening's meeting. And I just checked now. It's still nothing from him. But when I read the provision that we adopted back at that special town meeting in December of 19, it specifically references Mass General Law, Chapter 90, Section 18B. it specifically references Mass General Law, Chapter 90, Section 18B. And there's nothing in there that talks about, once you make the declaration, not being able to rescind it. So I see nothing in writing there that would make me think that it's problematic. It's a simple vote of the Board of Selectmen, so.
I know it's a simple vote. It's just that if we then find out it can't be rescinded, we're tied into it. So if you want to bring it to a vote, that's fine. I won't vote for it, but I'd be willing to wait till the next meeting. And if it turns out that we can rescind it anytime, fine, then I'd vote for it. I do think it's, we're just avoiding the bigger issue of what are we going to do to make that intersection safe?
John, I want to emphasize, I don't see this as one or the other. I see this as both, or potentially both. I certainly see it as getting started on it rather than waiting a year or two years to get it going. I think maybe this, it makes sense at this point, as long as Christine agrees, that maybe we put this on the agenda for the next meeting. I would also like to put on the agenda the rebuild project and invite back Rob and give other people the opportunity to join in that conversation. So I'm glad to hold off. I do feel strongly that we should declare a safety zone and get on with it.
But I have no problem with the safety zone for the Prospect Placenge Road, too.
I, Mark, I agree with you. I think we do need to declare a safety zone. I find it hard to believe that it couldn't be rescinded, you know, based on the language and the MTL and the fact that this was, the town authorized us to have this power. I just find it hard to believe that it's a permanent designation. And it may be something that's needed permanently anyway. But I think this is just buys us some time till we determine what, how we're going to really address, you know, fully the issues there. And I would have no problem with proceeding with this now. And I think there's all sorts of markings that Rob could do so that, you know, with paint or whatever, so that people are aware of the safety zones and to get people to slow down and then just see what happens until we're able to address this fully. Whether it's reconfiguration or, you know, three-way stop, whatever is determined. But, you know, we need to do something to slow people down now.
All right, I think maybe to be cleanest, if it's all right with everyone, let's get absolute confirmation from Town Council. We'll put this on the agenda for next time. Next meeting's August 24th, so I think we can vote the speed zone then. We could either have Rob back at that meeting or I think maybe Christine's away. Would you like us to wait until the September meeting?
No, do not wait. Yeah.
So we'll pick the next time. All right, anyone have any other comments before we move on? John Wilhelmson?
So I'm going to make one, I'm going to make two comments, which will be on both sides of that, just that way it negates them. One, I think to John's point, we probably will actually have more people driving to school than we will have, even though we're going to have less attendance because we're going to be looking for folks to help transport their students. That said, we shouldn't be, so, so that argues perhaps in favor of having the safety zone because we're not going to reconfigure any intersections between now and middle of September. On the other side of that, my personal experience has been with the accidents that I have witnessed that have, the near accidents, which are many of them, you know, they're not going that fast anyways. They're probably within 20 miles an hour. And that goes to the sort of fundamental issues of how the intersection is designed and we have some of the sightlines. So I look forward to a fuller discussion. And, you know, the hope with, that you can operate within the scope of the roadway that we have there, but we can have that discussion another time.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, can I just speak for a minute? This is Dominique, I live at Two Ring Road. I just want to say that I appreciate everybody's concern and we're really in favor of the safety zone, whether it's rescindable or not. It seems to me we'd always need to have that speed limit there. But we're very concerned about this because this really affects our property almost more than any, not almost, more than anybody else's. It really encroaches on our property a lot. So I look forward to further deliberation and to seeing and understanding any kind of study that's been done that really backs this up more than anecdotal reports of, you know, an accident here and there because we've lived here for 20 years and we really haven't seen anything. So while we appreciate the safety concerns, we're very, very concerned about this impact on our house.
Thanks, Dominique.
That's it.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, onward. Warrant for the state primary election. Liz, do we simply want to vote to sign the warrant? Is that what we're asking?
Yes. I'll pop this up on the cabinet for signature.
All right, do we need a vote?
I would, just to make it official.
Okay, so I make a motion that the Board of Selectmen sign the warrant for state primary election.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so that'll be on Bree's cabinet. And I think we're going to have some other stuff on Bree's cabinet. So at least, I will certainly get in there first thing tomorrow morning. John, will you be able to get in to sign?
Sometime tomorrow.
Okay, very good. Okay.
Everything, excuse me, Mark, everything is tabbed for you to sign. Going straight across, all on top of the cabinet, there's a lot of signatures again that I need it for some things.
Are we going to need a pay raise for all these signatures?
Yes.
So Bree, you only need one signature?
No, I'll need at least, I'll need two, John.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, but everything is tabbed for you to sign, you know. I put indicators on everything.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next item, the Common Victuaries License Renewal for Moon and Back Cafe. We feel like we have everything in the application that we need, Bree?
Yes, everything is there. Stopped up the check finally and the, but the work is ground settled. I will let Board of Health know that it was voted, if you vote to pass tonight.
And that runs through the end of the calendar year?
December 31st, yes.
Okay, so may I make a motion, we approve the Common Victuaries License Renewal?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. North Plimpton Cemetery Outreach. Wow, you could read that in a weird sort of way if you wanted to. John?
Well, I brought this up and you wanted to put it on the, on the agenda. So I guess I'm, ask you, I, just to reiterate, the North Plimpton Cemetery, which is at the, on 106 at the Kingston-Plimpton line, is very overgrown. And the person who owns it lives in Olympia, Washington. They've owned it for some time, I think it's 10 to 12 acres, 10 to 15 acres. But the cemetery piece itself is about, about a third or half an acre. There's about 60 graves in there. At one time, the scouts had gone in as part of a project and really done a nice job of cleaning it up. But now it's just getting terribly overgrown. And my thought was, I'd like to reach out to that person and see if, what their inclination is, would they allow the town to do a scout project in there? Or even the town to clean it? And what's their thinking going forward with that cemetery?
What about donating the land to the town?
Yeah, I mean, I would love, I'd like to see the conversation go that way, obviously.
I think that would make the most sense.
Yeah. It is kind of funny in that it's right in the middle on the street. So the entrance, if you kept the land, would be on, it'd be like a U. But they've had that for a long time. And I don't recognize the name, I'm sorry, I don't have it right in front of me. But I don't recognize the name at all, and yet they've owned it way back.
Interesting.
So is that something you want to pursue, the conversation?
Yes, if, if you, the board, say okay, I'll contact her.
I am enthusiastically in favor.
Me too.
Okay.
Okay, I don't think we need a vote, I just wanted to make sure it was okay.
Beautiful. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next is Board of Selectmen Representation on Regional and Negotiation Committees.
All right, this one was mine.
Okay, good.
Because I'm on a bunch of negotiations committees. So I just wanted, I think some clarification is, you know, it makes sense for people to finish up assignments, if you're already in, you know, serving on this committee, to finish till the contract is signed. But I just wasn't sure, I mean, is this typically, would it be the chair's duty to represent the board on these different negotiating committees? I think that's how I kind of got into these.
So which one specifically?
I, well, I was the rep for the police contract. I am the Silver Lake rep for, for those different negotiations. I'm doing the Denet negotiations, which is wrapped. So it's basically just, just all of those. And there's also the Plymouth County Commissioners, I'm a rep for that.
Full call on the planning?
OCPC.
Yeah.
I, I don't think we've ever specifically had a policy on whether it was the chair or it was divided up. I'm content with whatever this board wants to do. I'm certainly willing to take on some of the load if we want to share it or if you feel like chair should do it for the year or through whatever the conclusion of next contract, I'll accept the punishment if need be.
Just to offer a thought, I mean, so we, we've, in fact, I just signed, again, the Denet Teachers Contract because there was a small clerical error that was found in it. But all of the, all of the schools are subject to impact bargaining because of school reopening. So, and my guess is, is that to, to, in this day and age, to think that we're ever done because things are going to change and we may have to make additional changes, which will then, so, we may, there may be a benefit at least until we get to the other side of the wonderful excitement we're living through now, to break it up a little bit. Just because for us, it's not just, not just Plimpton, it's Silver Lake and then it's whatever goes on with all of the other contracts that are out there that the board has to deal with, you know, because I, I just don't, I don't, I just don't see things being, oh, okay, we're all set and everyone goes on. Because everything's changing every, every, days and days and days. I just note that. So even though we're done with Denet, we may have to have another session, although maybe we don't because the teachers have been with us in the sessions all along. But it is a fair amount of time.
Well, and we've signed one-year agreements. So we're going to need to start negotiating in about six months.
I gotta, I gotta worry about a week at a time.
Yeah, I know, that's way too, way too far in advance.
Are there, are there any of these that you're particularly interested in staying on, Christine? I mean, I, I think you'd like your load lightened if I read.
I, I would, I would, I would like, because I think I'm going to be on Silver Lake for a while. And I don't, and I'm definitely doing OCPC. And I really don't mind doing the Plymouth County Commissioners. And I like doing the police. But, and I like doing the Denet. But, you know, maybe if you could take over the Denet, that would be awesome. Because that's the teachers and the aides.
I've done the Denet in the past and actually I loved it. It's a really interesting dynamic between teachers and lawyers and townspeople. It's, it's a good one. So I'm glad to do that one. I mean, I'm glad to take on everything. You've been working incredibly hard for incredibly long time. But, you know, whatever you're, you're liking to continue with, please, whatever you'd like a little relief from, let me know.
Okay, all right, thanks, Mark, I appreciate that.
All right, we okay on that? Okay. We're up to Protected Health Information. Privacy Policy for Town Employees and Officials. So maybe I'll just start on this. Liz and I had talked about the concerns associated with this, particularly while waiting for a couple of test results. And so we felt the need to be checking with Town Council to clarify what our obligations were. And Town Council was kind enough to share with us a privacy party that I think Liz shared with us on August 3rd. And I think maybe, did, did we share that with everyone in town? Or so far, it's just with the Selectmen?
No, it was just, I just sent it to the board as a piece of correspondence to be discussed tonight. The recommendation from Town Council was that you vote to adopt the small policy. He does have a more robust one that he could provide us with, but he felt like this was a suitable start for us. And essentially, it reiterates people's rights pursuant to HIPAA. So you're not actually adopting anything new. It's what's already in place as far as federal law is concerned. But it puts it in a more concise format that I think would be easier for people to understand. And it's something that we would send out to our town employees and officials and just kind of remind everyone that even though we are dealing with a lot of unknowns with COVID-19, people's personal and protected medical information is just that, it's private. And we need to make sure that we're not violating anybody's privacy rights.
So I'm glad we'll be sending this out and just reminding people, this is so tricky and so confusing and sort of looking at the individual good versus the communal good. And what we know from a legal standpoint is that personal privacy is a right. And we have to be really careful not to trample on that. So I'm glad we're sending that out or will send it out and remind people. Any comments, John or Christine?
No, I guess not.
Do you need a vote, Liz?
I think it would be a good idea to vote and that way we have a date associated with it. And then any changes we make, we can update it accordingly and have sort of a written record of how it's evolved.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion that we adopt and send out the privacy policy that's been shared with us recently.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good, good, okay. This is School District Information and Updates, including COVID-19.
You guys took a good few weeks to not be around. So, all right, it's all a bit of a blur, but where we are as of end of last week and even as of today, first day of school will be the 16th of September. The, we are taking advantage both in Plimpton as well as in Silver Lake of the Commissioners' gracious offer of 10 days for professional development and training for the teachers that will not count towards the school year. So the school year has been brought down from 180 days to 170 days. The 10 days must be used at the beginning of the school year and school must start by the 16th. That's as I understand it. So that's what we're doing. So we have a lot for our teachers to, to get up to speed on, not just from an academic perspective of what they need to do to teach in a completely different environment, both in the building and out of it, but also all the health and safety sort of policies and regulations that they're going to need to be following in order to successfully have students in the building. So, so they will be, they will be working hard during that time period to make sure they're up to, up to speed and that they can do everything they can for all of our students when we start school on the 16th. A little bit different between Plimpton and Silver Lake. A little bit different between Plymouth and Silver Lake as far as what we mean by starting school on the 16th. Silver Lake did vote in a hybrid start. And district-wide, a hybrid start was voted in, but Plymouth is a little bit different, which I'll get to in a minute. What we mean by a hybrid start is that students will be broken up into four cohorts. And I'm actually going to go out of order. Cohort C would be those students that elect, for whatever reason, to do a full remote learning. So meaning that they would not be in the building. Cohort D would be high, high-needs students or students designated as high-needs with a prioritization for in-person learning. Cohorts A and B would be the division of all the rest, broken into two cohorts. Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday would be in-person days at school. Wednesday will be remote for all, both in Plymouth and at Silver Lake, with the ability to be able to do some other deeper cleaning as well as to provide professional development for teachers for the first part of the day and then to do synchronous learning remotely later in the day. Because we figure we're going to have a fair amount to talk about as we go along here and to adapt and to adjust and to make sure that we're doing the best job we can. Just from a Plymouth perspective, a lot of stuff going around over the last couple of weeks. We voted, we had, and if you, I don't remember whether we even talked about this. We had to, we had to vote a preliminary plan, which was sort of a very high level, where are we thinking we're at at the moment? That was due to the state on the 31st. And then we had to vote a comprehensive plan, which is what we did last week, and that was due today. Though I believe there were a couple of days of extension if that was needed. So in between, so last Monday, the 3rd, I actually hosted on Zoom a separate parents' meeting, which was referenced in the paper, because there were a lot of questions from folks and people didn't know where to get answers. So we, that was pretty productive, almost hour and 20-plus minutes that we'll sort of talk and answer the questions we can answer. There's still a lot of things that we cannot answer and there even are now with our comprehensive plan. Because the comprehensive plan sort of sits up here and sort of defining what we're doing, but then we have to implement it and come up with implementation plans. And of course, a lot of the questions that people would like answered are going to be flushed out as we build those implementation plans. But you can't build the implementation until you have sort of the high-level plan. So we did, we did host that meeting. We probably had about 60 different, feel like saying folks, but obviously a lot of them were pairs of parents on the call for that informational meeting. We had about 30 folks on the call for the meeting before we did the preliminary plan, although that really was just the school committee administration and pretty much all of the Denit teachers joined us for that discussion. Thursday's meeting was a little bit different. We had, I think, something like 60 or 70 different folks at different times that were on that meeting. Included a much greater percentage of parents that were interested in hearing what we're going to do. Specific to Plymouth, we voted in what we call a phased-in hybrid approach. So on the 16th of September, we will not have, well, that's a Wednesday. So if you look at the way that everything is set up, that should be a remote day. We'll see how we end up implementing that. But we will be starting to phase in our plan and that will happen over a number of weeks to be determined as we figure out the implementation. So very likely, the first students in the building will be those that are deemed to be high-needs. That way we can get them in the building. We can make sure that the protocols that we have in place make sense. We can also, for these folks who are probably disproportionately disadvantaged by the shutdown that we had in the spring, that they start to be able to get back in and be able to start learning again. Probably we'll also bring in the kindergartners during this period. And maybe we will phase in by grade with the cohorts, with the goal of being into our hybrid model over the course of a number of weeks. I don't know what that is yet because, you know, Mr. Veneto hasn't had the opportunity to sit down and figure that out or to sit down and speak with his staff to kind of really hash out what this looks like. I expect over the next couple of weeks we'll get there. Next steps, there will be a survey that will go out to all parents this week. On a survey, a form really, along with the comprehensive plan, so that parents can commit to what model they are interested in doing, whether it be a hybrid, an in-person model, which would be hybrid, or a full remote. And we need that for planning purposes because we can't figure out who's doing what in the school as far as classes, if we don't know how many kids are going to be in each class. So if, in other words, you could have a class where five of the kids are remote and depending on which class that is, you may only require one teacher to teach that class, if it's that sixth-grade class that's small, for both in-person and remote, freeing up the teacher to teach something else. So we're going to be utilizing all of the staff within the building to probably be outside their comfort zones to be able to staff this model, both in-person and remotely. But Mr. Veneto is very confident that we'll be able to make it work and the teachers have been incredibly supportive and committed to being able to make this all work. So those commitment forms will be both for which mode of instruction are you looking for and also a commitment on the bus side of things. Because buses are, can only run at one-third capacity of where they are today. So yes, we are going to have less people in the school because we're looking at putting in roughly half or a little more than half of the students for the days that we're in-person. But there will be a need to have folks commit to dropping off their students at least as best as they can. So that's going to be really important to make sure we understand how all of this, all of this fits together. And then the other, the other piece I would just mention is that, you know, we held a meeting today with some of the folks from the, myself and Jason Fraser from the school committee, as well as Mr. Veneto and the folks that are on the emergency management team, to start figuring out the other piece of this, which is the health piece of it and the contact tracing and so on. I think the one thing that comes out of that meeting, and already we've had a great sharing of information, both by the Board of Health as well as from the fire chief, which is great. There's stuff that we've seen this afternoon that we had no idea was even out there. And so that's really positive. But I think the other piece that we need to understand is that our concept of contact tracing at a state level is perhaps not as good as it could be. So I think that what we're seeing is that from a school perspective, you know, this community has got to be the Denit community. And we've got to be really, we've got to be careful. We've got to do what we need to do in order to help keep our kids safe. But we also need to really strongly encourage self-reporting. If we're going to be able to keep the doors open at the Denit, self-reporting is going to be key to that because I don't see any other way that we can have timely, the most timely information or to make decisions about what we're doing within the building. You know, and that has, that has nothing to do with our local folks, but we're there hampered by the information that they receive and how quickly they receive it. So we'll make sure that we're going to, as we build this out over the next number of weeks, we're going to make sure that we build these connections in there so that we're communicating both between the school and the town and the town and the school. Because the, you know, we're putting a lot of people together and, you know, schools have been closed for most of this pandemic. And so we just don't, honestly, we don't truly know. Hopefully everything works out great and we can get into our full hybrid and we can run for many months without a problem. That said, I would expect that we will be remote for a period of time, multiple times throughout the year, based on cases popping up. If I'm wrong, I'd be thrilled. It would be the best thing that would have happened in 2020. So that's, that's that. The other piece of that is we're putting together a set of protocols for the Denit that look not just at cases within the, within the building and the Denit family, meaning outside of the building but within families of students, as well as what's going on in town. And either of those things could trigger a short switch to remote or a more extended switch. But the protocols are set up in an effort to make sure that we have the time to think through and contact trace ourselves, any potential cases that come up within the school. So, you know, long and short of it is we spent a lot of time working on the academic piece of that and figuring out what that model is going to look like. Now turning to figuring out how to implement that model. And now, and now we also have to figure out how we're going to make sure the safety protocols pieces work together. With all that, questions?
How about a statement?
A statement?
Ready? Thank you, John. You've really done an amazing job taking the lead here and your Zoom meeting. And, I mean, you're a parent too of kids that are affected by this. It's just, you know, you've done an amazing job trying to keep parents informed, trying to stay ahead of the curve on this, being so nimble and, you know, flexible. It's just, you've done an amazing job. So thank you. I'm just so glad that we've got you at the helm here to help lead the school and get us going in the right direction. So thank you.
I appreciate it. I mean, I think it's, you know, you look at what's going on, I mean, around the country, but, you know, more locally around the state, and each district is so very different. And the challenges that are presented, we have a lot of benefits with the Denit. And we're going to leverage those as much as we can. I mean, I think we really are committed to making sure that we can have in-person running for our students, but we're not going to do that at the expense of safety. But we're all, and everyone is working in this, all of the school committee members, the administration, which I'm not sure has slept for at least four weeks. They certainly haven't had a day off. And for, and for the teachers, I mean, they have been working, this is supposed to be their summer vacation. And I'm not sure any of them have really had, well, none of us have really had the summer vacation we probably thought we were, but they certainly have been, you know, very supportive and very much at the table to try and make sure that we can do this for our kids. And that, and then, you know, I think that goes to the, across our region as well. Albeit, we have different, different ways of doing things. So, you know, we're here, we're consuming a lot of information and we're trying to just make the decisions we can. One of the things that has been key to this, and Mark, you probably heard it the other night, is I keep saying, you know, this is going to be difficult for everyone because one, we don't have all the answers. And two, we have to do something that schools aren't typically used to doing, which is, this is the way we do something. And we do this and we do it for a long time because that's, we've set it up. We've thought about it for a long time and we do it. We're putting this together in weeks. Some of the stuff is in days, with guidance changing all of the time. I mean, it just, it's rapid fire, all this, you know, the chief sent us along the memo from the fire marshal that had gone to the fire departments. We're reading through this, we've never seen this. And it's laying out specific guidelines that we're like, whoa. You know, poor Peter's head probably exploded when he read it. You know, and it's just one more thing to think about. And we're all building this airplane on the runway. And I think everyone's going to try and do the best thing. But what we have to do because of that is we have to be nimble. And we have to be able to think of the schools, unfortunately, a little more like we do about business. In that we have to be, we have to, we have to quickly recognize when something isn't working and we have to adjust course immediately. And if in two days that's working even worse, then we need to accept that and go back and re-correct. And that's going to be key to be able to deal with this. It's going to be key to being able to deal with when a case shows up in the Denit or shows up in a family and being able to try and keep it down because this is the largest collection of people anywhere in Plymouth. You know, four days a week. And so if we, if we don't get this right, then we'll all be doing remote. And we know that even though this is going to be a very different remote learning than what we had in the spring, it's not, it's still not going to be the same as being able to have some in-person. So thank you for those comments. It's really appreciated. I know a number of folks reach out, both with kids in the school and people without. And that feels good. But we're here to do our job and we're going to keep doing it at least as long as I can stay awake.
So I'll echo everything that Christine said. I attended the last Thursday meeting and actually, soon after the meeting, I was speaking with someone, a local resident who can be extremely critical of town government and meetings and all that. And that person was utterly stunned by the professionalism and the detail that you guys had put together. And I was pretty darn stunned too. I fervently pray that all those efforts were, that the situation is such that you're able to continue and not have to make a huge change in what you've envisioned. Well done.
And last thing, and then I'm going to stop because I'm done talking about schools for the day because it's 30 and that's my rule. It's not my rule, but I try and pretend it is. The, you know, the plan that is built, the comprehensive plan, I mean, it's built to move. And it's not, you know, we talked, I think, I think Jill had come up with the language to call it, you know, modes of the plan? Because everyone was talking about them being three separate plans and it was incredibly confusing. Well, the mode's a plan and hybrid is a plan and it's not, it's on a continuum. So, you know, even if, even if we push, even if we have to move into remote for most of the students, it doesn't mean after, you know, after we immediately assess that it doesn't impact, let's say, the high-needs students, that we can't bring them back the next day. Right? We're going to, we're going to be thinking and being able to be adaptive. And it's not like, okay, we have a case, everything shuts down. It may for a day or two, but that's to make sure we get the right information and then make the choices of how do you reopen. It's not about how do we keep it shut down, it's how do we reopen? So I think that's the benefit of this is that we should be able to move back and forth.
Yeah, that's the real elegance of that plan is the degree to which it's fluid and to the degree to which it puts in place any element that you have to go to along the way. That's really, really well done.
I, let me chime in because this was going to be my rave too. I sat in on the meeting you had on August 3rd. And the thing that I came away with, the strength of the Denit is that everybody's involved. I think there were 55 connections on that, but when I looked at the ones that were on video, there were multiple families on one connection, that they had kind of come together. And the nice part of that was, is I watched you go through that for an hour and a half or whatever it was, that slowly people were nodding. You know, this is the safety of their children. And the fact that you were there providing the leadership and you had Peter Venito and you had teachers, you had members of the school committee, it really speaks well of what's going on. I'm very supportive and I think it has to be you people because you're invested. You have kids. Somebody like myself, sure, I'd like to do a good job, but I think it's a whole different thing when you have the children in your own family. You got to make sure this thing works. So thank you.
Okay. Okay to move on?
Sure.
All right, email addresses for boards, committees and town website.
So I put this one on the agenda. You know, when we started BackAways on the technology, one of the things was to, we, we heard, I think this was maybe four or five years ago, that we could only have so many email addresses because of the cost. And that's all been changed now. We can have as many email addresses as we want. One of the things I've found is we put on the town site that here's who you should go to, but if you don't know who to go to, we had my email on there, my town email. And I found that people don't want to call, they want to come in by email. And I think what we need to have is now that we can have, anybody have an email address, is have every committee have an email that's on the front page of the town website. So take the finance committee. They have a finance committee email. They're fine. It goes to Nate, but it's not under his name, it just says Finance Committee. And then he distributes what needs to be distributed to the rest of the members. But we have other committees that have no email address. We just put a telephone number. And if you've tried to call these numbers during off-hours, it doesn't always work. You don't get a response back, et cetera. And I think it's time now that we should just have the email addresses on the town website. Have every board have one, let them decide how they want to do it. They can have their own personal one if they want. They can have a committee chairman just have one with a town, says like Conservation Commission at town, whatever, along with a telephone number and let the people know that they can contact. There are email addresses, but you have to burrow down for a lot of them. And it's not obvious that they're there. And it's not obvious that they're there. Because all you see is a name of this person on the board. You don't know that if you click on it, it brings up an email properly filled out. So, that's what I'm after. I think it's time, I think it just makes total sense. Some of the boards may push back, but let's see what happens.
All right, for a thought?
Sure.
If you go back to our old website, most of the committees had a email.
Yeah.
And what happened is, is that when we switched over to the new site, new site, one, the way that it's set up wasn't the same. Remember the old site, you had it set up on the left hand of the first page you hit. For any board you clicked on, you had the contact information and the emails were there. And what, what, the way we had it set up for a number of committees is you had a committee email, but then it auto forwarded to the individual email, town email for the person. So that when they responded, it was them responding and not coming from like that. We didn't have all committees that would do it, but we got most because we couldn't force them to do it. But we probably had a lot more than we do now. But the other problem with the newer site is that the email server system that they used when we switched over, you, you had to go and log in separately to a separate place and you couldn't have it fold into your regular email, whether it be Outlook or Mail or whatever. And that became so cumbersome, that's why I stopped using my email addresses because you just couldn't, I'm not, you know. So, I think that if we've solved a lot of that, then I think it's, I'd be, I'd be much happier to have a town email to do, or a couple of town emails to do my other town work. Everything's at the school, I use a school email. And it'd be much easier than having to keep folders of everything that I have in case we need to produce them. And maybe that's a way to also help people think that they actually should use the town email. Is that if, if you have a document request and then you have to go comb through your own personal email looking for stuff, that is less than ideal than being able to just go and dump the, dump the town's, you know, email box of what's there.
So, are you supporting me?
I'm supporting you. No, as long as, I mean, I assume what we're doing now is much easier, it just folds into Outlook or whatever, you can add it.
Exactly. And I, I, I think this is a conceptual that, let's go do it and then we'll figure out a process of how to make it happen and come back and take another look at it.
So, I, I'm, I'm not fully grasping this yet, but let's say recreation committee would have a rec committee at plumptontown.org address?
They could, or they could have their own.
Have the chair, if for those that shouldn't, but that are still using their personal email, could that be what's on there?
Sure. Sure, it's up to them. All we're looking for is a way for the residents to contact the recreation in that case and know that they've got a written, you know, document that says, okay, I contacted. And then they should expect a reply and whether or not the person wants to use their own personal, in some cases they may because there's just not enough emails and they don't want to keep checking the town one. They may say, hey, I'll just use my personal.
Well, and of course, that's what some of us do.
We know.
Yeah, just for ease. I mean, I'm totally in favor that there be an email available for each board and committee and commission so the citizens have a way of contacting us. I'm fine with that. I'd be a little more hesitant. I think some, some boards and committees don't want another place to have to look for information.
That's their choice. It's their choice.
Then I, I would support what you're describing. Is there any downside to this or any?
Only if somebody says, I don't want to have any email interaction with residents anyways. That's the only way you can see a downside.
I think it's public records requests too. It's, it could be problematic if you're using your own personal email. You really should have a town email for that type.
I, I agree Christine, but we don't do it today for ourselves.
No, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, and Christine, I also agree and I will admit being the worst offender, I don't need another place to look and get stuff lost.
Yeah, I know. I know. It just makes it more difficult for you if there were public records requests and you have to go through all of your emails to find it. And I just don't know if it, I don't know if it opens you up to additional scrutiny if you don't have a town email.
Yeah, I think this is a time for good trouble where if we went to legal, they would say, don't do it. Absolutely don't do it. You gotta have everybody with a town email. They've already told us that in the past. But the reality is, this is a whole volunteer town. You know, anybody who's on these boards and committees is volunteering. And we gotta make it easy for them. In my case, what I do is I go in every morning to my town one and just forward everything over to my personal one. And then on my personal one, I keep folders that are only town folders. So, I have a selectmen and then you click on that and it says Board of Health, you know, just goes down with maybe 30, 40 folders. So, if somebody came in and said, gee, uh, the open meeting law, we want to see everything that you talked about in town, I would just take all those and just move them over.
But not everybody's going to do what you do.
No, but.
You shouldn't have to do that. So, if you use an email client like Outlook or Apple's Mail, you could be able to add in the town email so it just shows up. It's like I have, my mailbox has like four different emails in it. And I can click all inboxes so everything shows up as one. I go and if I respond to one of those emails, it will go out under the email it came in on. And so, I think one of the keys here is if whoever does our email and technology piece is having simple instructions of if you add the town email, it will just end up showing up on your phone or whatever it is, or your regular email because you put it into the client and it's just a box. And that way you can do your town stuff on town stuff, you can see it everywhere else. And, and in this day and age, it should be able to do that.
It should be able to and, but at least I've tried on my town email and I, it may be me. I've also checked with Michael and at least so far, haven't found a way to forward it to my, my personal.
But you shouldn't need to forward it. It should show up with your, in other words, it's another full, it's, 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 you have all of your inboxes. You can have more than one inbox. You could have 10 inboxes sitting there. And if you put all inboxes, it just shows up like it's your regular email, but it's actually under the town one. And that's, that's, that's one of those things of you have to make this stuff easy for people and then they'll do it. And what happened is, is we had it easy and then it wasn't easy. And so, a whole bunch of people stopped using it because of that.
And I, I think right now it isn't easy and I, I don't know how we get back to easy.
Well, why don't you let us take Liz and I, and I'll have John at least look over what we're doing. Make sure that, you know, that we, we can make it easy. I do think we need though, a way for the residents to be able to converse with us through mail. And it's not easy now. That's for, we don't even have some boards with addresses, so.
Well, and a lot of people don't answer the phone. If I don't see them, if I don't know the, because every time I don't know the number and they answer the call, it shouldn't have answered. So, the problem here too is, is that if people have the phone number and they call, they're going to go to voicemail. And then I'm going to have to listen to the voicemail and I'm going to have to call them back. Now that phone would have been so much easier if they just sent an email.
You know, we close at 2:00. People really don't like having to leave a voicemail at 2:50. You know, it's like, hey, what's going on here?
Right, we need to be accessible.
Yes, exactly. Thank you.
So, that's something we'll keep working on, right?
I'd be glad to take the lead on that.
Thank you. Okay. Good. All right, contracts expiring in 2021.
I think I had asked for this. And Liz put the list together and basically it's, I think she had provided us with a list of contracts that were expiring. We're going to have the police that we signed a one-year deal, the Denet teachers, we signed a one-year deal with them. I think we may have the fire chief that is expiring. Liz can correct me if I'm wrong.
Not till the end of the year, so we have, we can put that off till after town meeting.
Right. And then, John, the deal we signed with the Denet aides, was that a three-year deal or a one-year deal? One year, so that's another one. So, it's just something to think about, that we'll need to start working on these. Maybe, you know, the start of the, the year, January, start looking at opening up contract negotiations for these one-year deals or the ones that are expiring in 2021.
Okay. All right. Board of Selectmen goals for 2021. I think I sent out yesterday the last, or, or the next iteration of this. At last meeting, the feeling was instead of eight or nine or 10, we'd get it down to five. This has been good fun for me to try to encapsulate what we're working on. And as I noted in the list that I sent out yesterday, I think I've come to see this as the preamble for our priorities and projects list. And if, if nothing else, where I've gotten to kind of works for me and allows me to kind of grasp what I want to be concentrating on. So, I don't know if we have to spend a lot of time on this or if people have concerns or suggestions, but I certainly opened up for that.
It'll look good, Mark. I just would consider getting rid of the, the COVID because that's kind of self-evident.
Yeah, that's true.
I had looked at that one and not that I'm a board member, but I had wondered if maybe you should adjust that one and say something that you'll remain responsive and in tune to any sort of pandemics, health crises or natural disasters, something like that. I think day to day, it's really some of us with emergency management that have to manage that and more or less report back. But I don't know if you want to be as specific as COVID.
Okay.
It's been a weird year, who knows what could be coming next?
Yeah, oh God.
So, well, yeah, that's West Nile, Tripoli, Lyme and COVID.
Skip the murder hornets, so.
Yeah.
There you go.
Even they didn't want to stick around.
What, what if we just, what if we just delete number five, the navigating COVID? That'll leave four and those four things can be a preamble to the document that we have priorities and projects.
That sounds great.
I'm for, I'm for that.
We'll look at every two months and just kind of reiterate.
Yeah, they looked great, Mark. You did a nice job on those.
And actually foursies, I mean, technically people can only remember three things at a time. So, we're stretching ourselves with foursie, but foursie isn't too bad. Okay. So, I'm going to ask Liz to add that to our document and we'll have a shot at it in probably about four weeks.
Great.
We're up to almost midnight here. Actually, we're, we're up to the town administrator update.
Okay, I'll try to be brief. So, John Trina and I, we had a productive meeting with some folks from the Council on Aging to work through some items there. It's a little troubling. I've heard rumors from a few people in town that there were things circulating about the Council on Aging having been dissolved because people haven't been receiving the customary newsletters. We actually had a resident come to the building on Thursday and I talked with her for quite some time. Lovely person, but she was very interested in the future success of the COA. So, I think she may even be interested in becoming a board member. But I think it's very important that we get some updates out to people. The director indicated that she's working on a newsletter currently. But I think if we don't have anything from her by the end of the week, we should put something out. I can put it out, do an email blast, put something on social media, on the website and just ask people to push it to seniors that they know. I think it's, we've just been waiting a long time now for the newsletter to come together. And I think people need to know that the COA is alive and well and actually still running a lot of really helpful programs. Meals on Wheels is still going to Plumpton residents five days a week. Right now, it's being run out of the Halifax location and they're looking to bring that for two days a week out of our kitchen area at the townhouse, which we're going to need to talk further about with emergency management and Board of Health. I don't know that we're really equipped to do that out of our small employee break room space right now and do that safely. But nonetheless, the meals are still going out. They do have the pantry being restocked again at the townhouse, which is something that had lapsed for a bit due to COVID. Now it's back on. We worked through some issues that some of the board members were having. They expressed concerns that the food was being brought almost immediately to Woodlands. And so, now we've established that any food in the pantry will be there until 2:00 PM on Mondays. And then at that point, the Council on Aging Director will go and pick up the food, anything that's left over and bring it to Woodlands. So, that seemed to be a, a good compromise for everybody. And we want to make sure that all of our seniors, whether or not they reside at Woodlands, are getting access to any resources that we have in that pantry. So, we worked out a plan for that. We're also looking at the van grant. So, Bridgette actually heard from somebody at the state level and they were asking questions about getting the information together to get the vehicle registered. So, I need to follow up on that because I didn't hear anything from Joy that we were ready to take delivery. And they're talking to deliver this van as soon as Wednesday now. So, we'll try to close the loop on that tomorrow and figure out what we need to do or sign to make that happen. And additionally, I'm working.
Yeah? I did hear from somebody this afternoon.
Yeah?
And I am sending them the documents that they need for the registration part of it. They want an R and V one. I thought that I would send them a completed one. And I will put you on that email as well. They did send me some and they were sending me more information.
Okay, and I'll also, I'll get somebody from Mass DOT in communication with us tomorrow too because they're the ones actually footing the bill for it. And then I believe we have to pay them the $12,000 that we had appropriated. So, that's good. If you can handle the registry part, I'll work on the contract piece with Mast dot.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll include you on the email that she sends me. Mast dot was part of it too. Thank you.
And then we're also working right now with the Board of Health. They asked for a few days to consider a safe way to get some events going outdoors for seniors or patrons at the library. So, we're trying to see if there's a safe way that we could go about getting people outside and getting them some fresh air, at least while it's still nice enough out to do so. So, we're working out a plan for that. Along those same lines, and John touched on it briefly, we did have the emergency management discussion today with the school folks. And that was really helpful as far as getting everybody all on the same page. And we're doing something similar with library and, and COA in the upcoming few days. But we're going to give the Board of Health a chance first to work out a plan for some of that. Additionally, the COVID information is changing by the day. The Fire Chief received some interesting guidance that, for employers. And basically, it's telling everybody that they want you to double down on the contact tracing efforts, but of course, without violating HIPAA and the privacy laws. So, we're trying to navigate all that and kind of break that down and see what it means. Let me see here. So, I also have a note here. We received correspondence from Habitat for Humanity of Greater Plymouth. And they are actually coordinating their rent relief program and they've extended the deadline to apply for that to August 25th. And what that does is it supplies one-time rent assistance or relief to low and moderate income families. rent assistance or relief to low and moderate income families and households. So I think I should get something up on the website for that and a link out to people. And we can put it on social media and just if, if we know of anybody who might qualify. It might be a good idea too. I can send it to Joy Marble and see if there's any of the seniors that are interested. But with that deadline coming up for that rent relief, I think we should get something out there ASAP so people can look into it and see if they qualify. And I think that's it for me for right now.
Great. Thank you.
Liz, did you mention the tents?
I didn't. I, we can talk more about that with Board of Health, but yeah. So the Council on Aging purchased three outdoor pop-up tents and some tables and chairs.
I think it was given to them, wasn't it?
No, she paid for it out of her formula grant.
She did?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I guess that's what I was thinking, out of the grant.
Yeah. So she paid for that out of the grant. So we're looking to see, she offered to supply one of the tents to the library. We just want to be careful. We want to promote events and get people out and about to the extent that it's safe and practical to do so. So emergency management more or less said that we would yield to the Board of Health on this, just to make sure that there aren't any missteps and that everything is going in accordance with all of the state guidelines. There was one other quick thing I did want to touch on though. We're having some major email issues and IT issues. Our IT person is on top of it. He had implemented a new email filter and it made the spam emails that are circulating stop, but it also put a stop to several legitimate emails. So they all got bounced back to those vendors and we weren't receiving emails from people. And there was really no rhyme or reason to why it was rejecting certain ones. So we had to shut that filter off and now the spam ones, I mean, sometimes they're coming in like multiple emails an hour. It's really getting kind of out of hand. So he is working on that. I mean, I'm, I'm not an IT expert, so I don't know, but there has to be a middle of the road filtering option so that we can function normally and put a stop to some of the spam. It's really kind of alarming. They actually will take bits and pieces of emails that you had sent to somebody and it looks like it's coming from somebody in your contacts. And when you scroll down, some of the context is there from other emails. So, you know, it's something that we have to obviously get taken care of as soon as possible. I thought it was fixed, but like I said, the filter was too strong, filtering out too much. So we're back to square one on that. But I think long-term, it should promote more of a discussion about long-term where we're going with our IT and, and some of this. So that's it for me now with my updates.
Thanks, Liz. So I think we're up to minutes. We have two sets of minutes, June 22nd and July 20th that need to be looked at. So June 22nd first, anyone have any concerns on these minutes?
Nope.
Looked good.
I had just one thing on, on the second page, not to belabor a point, but we were talking upon, about what we used to call the parking lot. And the last line says, this list will now be called Selectmen Priorities. I, I thought we were still calling it Selectmen Projects and Priorities. Anyone care either way?
That's fine.
Yeah, I like projects and priorities.
Okay. And I think that's probably what we originally voted. So maybe we can have that added back to those minutes. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So, all right. So, and then 7:20, did anyone have any concerns?
You need to vote on those minutes though.
I was gonna vote on them together, but.
All right. On 7:20, I had the word overtly on the second page. I don't know if people are gonna know what that means. I don't even know if I really know what it means. I mean, is it, is that in-person learning?
Where's that?
It's, it's under John's update. It's school update. And there's gonna be three different methods. I'm sorry, it's so dark here. I'm having a hard time reading. Where it says overtly, hybrid, and remotely. I think I'd rather have that say maybe in-person.
Full, full in-person.
Yes.
Person, hybrid, and remote.
Perfect. I like it. Cause people aren't gonna even know what that means.
Not sure what that means.
Okay.
And I had a couple things on the second page. The first paragraph, it's, it says financial committee. It probably should read finance committee. And then the second, the second paragraph there is about the Board of Health upgrading the triple E level to moderate. And I wonder if there shouldn't be another sentence that we have declared that outside activity in the town-owned land will be closed from dusk to dawn. I mean, should we put that in there so that we are documenting?
Okay.
So then I guess that would read, there is now a ban on outdoor activity on town-owned property from dusk to dawn until further notice.
Or the Board of Health has issued a...
Yes, that's good. Yeah, great.
Ban.
Yeah, perfect. Okay. So we, we have some amendments to each of these meetings, but I make a motion, we accept the meeting minutes of 6:22 and 7:20 as amended.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So as far as dates to remember, just want to mention our, our next meeting is two weeks from now, the 24th. Our next meeting after that is September 8th. At one of those two meetings, I would like to bring before the Board of Selectmen a, a vote to authorize withdrawing $24,000, $24,500 from the capital stabilization fund to help us retire the bonds on two book preserve. I will be meeting with Finance Committee at their first meeting after Labor Day. So I'd like to put that on the agenda of one of those two meetings. Anyone have a preference on whether it's 8:24 or 9:08 that we discuss that and vote on it?
I'd rather have it after the Finance Committee.
I'd like in September if possible.
Yeah.
Okay.
Rather than, yeah, cause I'm not gonna be there on the 24th.
Right. Okay.
And it'd probably be better if I was there too.
Okay. So it could be 9:08. Well, all right. So I'll just leave it open and we, until we hear from the Finance Committee.
Okay.
You wanna, you wanna be, I, I was kind of hoping to go to the Finance Committee, describe what has happened and why this is actually a fairly moderate request. I, I kind of hope to go and say the Selectmen had already voted. You have some preference to be after them?
Well, just that, one, does this clean it up? Does this, are we out of?
Yes.
This totally cleans it up?
Yes. The goal here is to retire the bond with no more debt. We will have cleaned out all the various funds, the, the private fundraising and everything else. But the bond is, would have to be, is, is due late October. Really, the sooner we get these votes and we assure everyone in townhouse that we're done with this, the better from my perspective.
Well, then you may want to put it on the 24th then, if, if that's the case, if you've already had a chance to talk to FinCom.
We could wait until the 8th.
Okay.
Let's see how it plays out. I'll check in with you all next meeting.
Okay.
Very good. Did we already do our raves?
Yeah.
We kind of did.
Well, can I do one more rave?
Ah, please.
All right. All right. This is, I mean, we are so fortunate to have such a dedicated group of professionals that are leading us through this with Liz and Chief Clancy and Chief Silva and John Wilhamsen and Art on Board of Health and everybody else, Rob from Highway. I mean, they're just the whole townhouse. Everybody has really come together. And when I go to my various meetings like OCPC, there are town halls that aren't even open to the public yet. And they're blown away that we have been up and running for as long as we have. And because we have such a group, a great group of people, we've been able to, to do this. And I just am so grateful. And when I talk to other people, it really makes me appreciate the, the great job that Liz and everybody has done. So thank you. You guys are my rave.
Thank you.
Totally agree. Beautifully said. Thank you.
I've got one thing. A resident approached me, and we don't have to decide anything, but this is a longtime resident. Dick Colley passed away. And this person was looking for some way of honoring him, maybe attaching his name to, he said the industrial park, but I said, you know, we can't do that. That's Cisco's. So anyways, it's something we probably want to talk about. And maybe as a follow-on to that, some point in the future, we should talk about what is our policy vis-à-vis buildings, et cetera, and have some sort of a policy so that we can talk to our residents. So I'm just laying that out. I'm not saying we have to do anything right now.
Probably need more buildings.
Yeah, well, we could start with the dumpsters.
Yeah. How about Joe Freitas and Dick Colleyway?
Well, I want a dumpster named after me. All right, people. Really long meeting. Well done. All your efforts very much appreciated. We'll be back in a couple weeks.